Good evening. Uh-oh.
I keep trying.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Bennington Select Board on, whoa, on September 9th. Thanks for that, Mike. There we go. September 9th, beautiful night. I am Donald Campbell. I'm the chairman of the board. I would ask my fellow people to please introduce themselves. Why don't we start with you, Stuart, since you're on the far right here?
Thank you. I'm Stuart Hurd, the town manager.
Hello, everyone. My name's Jeanne Connor.
Hello, Bruce Lee Clark.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Bill Scully.
Who needs no mic and needs no introduction because she does so well. Before we start our meeting, it's our tradition to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I would normally be going to my right at this point, but Jim is going to be a little bit late, and so Bruce, I'm going to ask you if you'd please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Well done. So the first, we have a very busy meeting tonight. We have a lot of things going on, and we'll try to move through here, but the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which are the minutes of August 29th and September 4th, which were an interview session with candidates for the Energy Committee and the warrants as circulated. So are there any questions or comments or recusals, anything else that we need to know about on these?
I'll recuse myself from the last Select Board meeting, the official meeting.
The September, August 29th? Yep. Which you are not present.
I was also absent.
Okay, so Chad also is not present. Any other comments?
No.
Jean?
I just wanted to let everyone know, mostly the public, that I did ask Stuart about, let's see, 321178 on warrant, 3117, 321178 on page two, the removal of the sludge, and it is indeed reimbursed by, will be reimbursed by the state, which I was really happy to hear.
Okay. Unless there are other questions or comments, I would ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move forward.
Did you do those too?
Yes. Yeah, those are also part of it, yeah. So we're moving into public comment, and this is a section of our meeting that we reserve to hear comments from people who have comments to make. We ask you to please keep your comments under three minutes if possible. We do have a busy meeting, but we nevertheless would love to hear what you have to say, providing it's not an item that's on the agenda. So if any of you have signed up on this list, but you were hoping to speak to items that are on the agenda, I guess I would ask you to self-identify and wait until we get to that item. So, first up, Mr. Bethel.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Well, two things. One, something I don't want to say on the agenda because I don't know if it's going to stay for the whole meeting. I do support Mr. Scully's proposal, as you all are going to hear about it. I do support, and I think the board ought to really adopt that. Second thing is, I got a question. On the Putnam Block, last week I didn't know it was on the agenda, or last time I would have been here. How much of the Putnam Block monies are gifts from the feds and the state and everything else? And how much are loans? Does anybody know roughly?
I can't give you those numbers.
I mean roughly, ballpark. There are loans, correct?
There are, and I can't.
Okay.
But we can get you those numbers.
Okay, but.
Yep.
What I want to know is, if the revenue isn't generated from this project, on the loan part of it, and we've got to pay, somebody's got to pay it back?
That's correct, Mike. The only loan that the town is involved in is a $300,000 loan to the group, and it has a deferred period of time where interest only, and then ultimately it must be paid back, regardless of whether the project succeeds or not.
But there are many, many more loans than that. I'm not sure what your question was.
Right. My question is, on those other loans, are they going to fall to the citizens and the taxpayers of Bennington?
No.
They're not?
It's private.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Okay. Thank you very much.
And I do support Mr. Scully's proposal.
The one we've been working on for a year? Okay.
Yeah.
So the next person, I think we heard from you last week, last meeting, but would love to hear from you again. Asher, where are you? Great. I lowered the mic. If you'd be willing to raise that mic up to your.
I absolutely would.
Thank you very much. The whole stick, there you go. Damn it, you. Sorry about that. There's a little knob on the side. There.
Oh, there we go. Easy fix when you know how. All right.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the Select Board. Most of you remember me from last meeting. This is now my second Select Board meeting. I am the resident Tourette's person here in Bennington as of June 1st, and I'm happy to be up in Vermont. So as I learn more about what happens in this state and what people are doing, I want to hear from you guys. What is being done about equities for people with disabilities? And if there's nothing being done, are there areas within your jurisdiction that you think equities for people with disabilities across the spectrum could be properly addressed and seen to? So that would be my question for tonight. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. We'll work on that, and I'll be in touch. If you'd like to, at some point, give me some contact information, I'll try to give you a call.
Absolutely.
Start it like that. Okay. Thanks. Mary Garrish. Good evening, Mary.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mary Garrish. I live here in Bennington. My comment has to do with the minutes, and although there, I realize the law may or may not require under the Open Meeting Act for the Select Board to come back from executive session if no action is taken, I believe that in the training from Condos Office, it was proposed that, to be more transparent, which is of course what we want our town to be all about, that it would be a good idea to come back from the executive session into the public meeting and say no action was taken, so that if someone like me has the patience to wait around, which I may or may not, I wouldn't, I would know what happened, and I wouldn't feel like I was, you know, out of the loop. So just for transparency, I would ask that you consider doing that and reflecting that in the minutes from now on.
Sure. That's not hard. Thank you very much. We just need to remember to do it, Stuart.
Yes, we do. We can do it.
Thank you. Barbara?
Hi, once again.
Good evening.
If you read the banner this morning, you probably know what I am going to tell you. You've probably all seen Greta Thunberg's videos and her speeches to some of the most powerful people in the world. And her quote that everybody loves, and I think is very apt, is, "The house is on fire; let's panic." And if you are keeping up with the climate news, the last several reports that have come out of the UN and out of the government, the US government, that it's getting very dire. So my group, the Climate Advocates of Bennington, are teaming up with Bennington College students to have a rally and a march on September 20th, when there's a global climate strike, where students are asking everyone to strike. And so I just wanted to inform you that that was up, and solicit your participation and your approval. Thank you.
Did you want to, did you give a time on that? It's 1:00, right?
Yes. 1:00 rally at Depot Park, or as I found out, it's the People's Park is the correct title. And then we'll be marching from People's Park up to the Four Corners and having demonstration rally kinds of things at the Four Corners.
Right. Right.
So you all are invited.
Okay. Thank you very much. Carolyn Ellis. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Carlin. I'm a junior at Bennington College. I'm one of the students organizing the climate strike on the campus, and I just wanted to, like Barbara said, solicit your support and let you know that Bennington College is super-invested in being a part of the strike with the town. That's been one of the key points that we've been talking about as we've been organizing, is how can these actions not be separate things but one entity? So I just wanted to talk a little bit more about what that looks like. Across the campus, students, faculty, and staff are going on strike at 11:00 AM Friday the 20th, and we're going to walk, bike, shuttle into town to join you all at People's Park and eventually march with you guys and join you at the Four Corners. There are several student organizers working on this, and we're super-conscious of how we can use this moment to sort of like set the script for how we organize with the town in the future. I really hope that it gets everyone at the college more involved. Yeah, just wanted to let you guys know. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll talk about this a little more when we talk about, when we briefly talk about the Energy Committee, but we have, we will be creating an Energy Committee, at least in part to help us sort through our priorities, and we would certainly welcome you or anybody at the college to participate, or anybody to participate in those meetings. So please stay engaged. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is something that I personally look forward to for quite a long time. Well, not that long, but long enough to get excited about it. We're very lucky to have a consulting group in town to help us think about an independent assessment of the performance, but also best practices in our police department. And so we have a group tonight from the IACP, and they've come a long way to be here, so please, please make them welcome. But also, before they even start, I'm going to say that what we've asked them to do tonight, it's kickoff meeting, but we've asked them to lay out the process for the next coming weeks, and there will be lots of time to participate with them and to talk to them directly. Tonight will not be the night to get into specifics about, about this interview other than what their process is. So that's the, that's the kind of context setting. But if I may, why don't I have you all come up, please, and introduce yourselves and walk us through what you've got for us on this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. First of all, I'll introduce myself and then the other members of the team. And can you hear me okay?
That's better. Thank you.
I've never been accused of not being able to be heard, but. My name is Jim Baker, and I actually didn't travel that far to get here. I'm a resident of Bennington County. I've lived in Bennington County since 1978. I have about 40 years of active law enforcement experience. I started my career here in Bennington County with the Vermont State Police, where I patrolled the roads of Bennington County for a number of years. And over the course of a 31-year career, I rose through the ranks to become the Colonel Director of the State Police. I ran the state police for about three years. And then I went on in Vermont to do a couple of other things. I was a police chief in Manchester for a period of time, the Public Safety Director in Manchester for a public, for a period of time. I served as the Director of the Vermont Police Academy for about a year and a half, and then I was the Police Chief in Waltham, Vermont for three years. I then went on to work at IACP, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, in Alexandria, Virginia, where I served on the executive staff for about three years. And during that time, I oversaw the stand-up of the Institute for Community Police Relations and the stand-up of the Center for Officer Safety and Wellness. And I'll talk a little bit more about the IACP in a few minutes after the rest of the staff introduced themselves.
Again, thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Jesse Lee. Been in law enforcement since I was age of 19. Recently retired a few years back, and I went to be Executive Director at Noble, another law enforcement organization. Also, I worked at IACP as well, doing management studies and executive searches. Worked with the Community Relations Service with the Department of Justice, doing a lot of community relations and also in the community police inform, law enforcement memorial services, and a lot of nonprofit organizations as well.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jennifer Waachuku, and I am Associate Counsel at the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights Under Law in Washington, DC. For those of you who may not be familiar with our organization, the Lawyers Committee is a racial justice legal nonprofit, so we engage in litigation and other forms of advocacy to ensure and secure equal rights for all. The Lawyers Committee engages in a number of different areas of civil rights and social justice work. One of them happens to be our Stop Hate Project, which is a community-based, community-focused, community-oriented project. A lot of the work of our project involves having direct communication and conversation and really providing resources and support for community members of all kinds across the country who have been impacted by hate crimes and hate incidents. We also provide Know Your Rights trainings in communities across the country to make sure that people are aware of what the hate crime laws are in their respective states. And one of the projects that we have engaged in specifically related with law enforcement, we conduct trainings with the Matthew Shepard Foundation, and we provide a skills-based training where we discuss what the federal and state hate crime laws are, as well as making sure that there's a community perspective and that those voices are reflected throughout the course of the training. Prior to joining the Lawyers Committee, I worked at the Department of Justice in the Civil Rights Division, specifically the Federal Coordination and Compliance Section, where I assisted with compliance reviews and investigations of entities, including law enforcement agencies, that receive federal financial assistance from the government. And I'm happy to be here, and thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Cruz. I'm a project coordinator at the International Association of Chiefs of Police. I work in the Policy Center, so I help facilitate the revision and development of model policies and accompanying research documents. We really strive to ensure that the documents are evidence-based and peer-reviewed and incorporate best practices and procedures in policing. And my role here is to support the meetings, meeting facilitation, and all of that.
Great. Thank you very much.
So let me, some folks in the room probably are not familiar with the International Association of Chiefs of Police. IACP, as it's known, is 125 years old. It is the largest membership organization in the world that represents leadership in law enforcement. There's about 30,000 members. We have a presence in about 150 countries. We work closely with many organizations such as the Lawyers Committee, the NAACP, the ACLU, and other organizations. A great deal of work has been done in the last five years at IACP in partnership with organizations focused on community safety, around creating fair and equitable policing in communities. And some of the example of work we've done over the last five years is we did a body of work in Baltimore after the Freddie Gray death and the riots in Baltimore. We did the after-action review of Charlottesville. I led that team that did that review after the riots and the death of Heather Heyer, when the riots broke out in Charlottesville. And I can go on a lot about some of the work that we do, but I want to emphasize to you that when we start this process, anyone who wants to speak to us either in a public forum or privately, we will speak to you about your input, about the study that we're doing. You'll hear this again before the other speakers get done, but there's a handout. On the back of that handout is an email address. If you don't feel like you can speak out in public, and this applies to anyone, if you don't feel like you can speak out in public, you can email us, and we'll set a time up to interview you on our visits coming back. To end, to end the conversation about IACP and what the organization does, the organization has done a great deal of work, and we'll provide copies and samples of the kind of work we've done. But we are instrumental in working with the Lawyers Committee on the hate crime work. We've been instrumental in creating model policy around such issues as policing vulnerable communities and policing disenfranchised communities. And so we're pretty proud of the work that's been done at IACP, and we're hoping that we can have an impact here in the community, and we look forward to working with the community on this project.
Okay, a little bit about the process. We're going to do an assessment. It's going to be an independent assessment. We put this team together coming from different backgrounds and part of the community so that we have transparency with them. So one of the things we're going to look at, we're going to look at the core functions of the police department, programs, practice, and conditions of the agency. We're going to compare and contrast departmental operational policies and practice against best practices. We're going to determine to what extent of any systematic racial bias manifests itself in the department policies and practices. With that, we'll talk about what recommended changes for the department policies and procedures. And the assessment's really going to look at policies and operational reviews, workforce and community surveys, and interviews from community forums. So it's going to basically be like a mixed method. We're going to have a survey instrument that's going to go out, and we're going to interview individuals. And you'll have a chance to talk to us one-on-one, focus groups, and we'll make ourselves available to wherever you are, and we're committed to come to you if necessary. So again, I wanted to thank you for that part, and she'll let us know our next trips here.
Yeah, we mentioned that there'll be further trips. They're currently scheduled for, whoop. They're currently scheduled for October 7th through 11th, 2019. We're hoping to meet with community groups and stakeholders. If you're interested in meeting during that time, definitely use the email on that assess, the handout that we just sent out. And then also at the end of this presentation, the email will be there as well. And then the next meeting is currently scheduled for November 4th through 8th. May also be a community meeting involved with that. Again, just interested in any times, locations, further details, feel free to email us, and we'll also try to get that information out to you as soon as everything is finalized.
So now we'll talk a little bit generally about what the outcomes are. Generally speaking, we are going to put together a final report. This final report will summarize all of the data that's been collected, as well as the conversations that we have had with community groups and stakeholders, reflecting what their experiences are. And it will contain recommendations, as well as an assessment that compares what the Bennington police practices are and what the policies are to what are accepted professional best practices and standards. We also will include in the report an assessment on community and police relations, and that's why when we come back to do our onsite meetings in October and November, it's very important that we have as much community participation as possible. And finally, we'll also include some specific recommendations to improve policies, practices, procedures, and to make sure that there is information to help enhance and improve relations between community members and the police department. So again, just to emphasize, we've talked about the email address, but just to underscore what Jim said, the email address is benningtonbt@iacp.org. Please reach out to us if you have any questions, if you would like to meet with us individually, if there are particular groups or organizations that you are a part of and you would like for your experiences to be reflected and for you to share, you know, what your concerns may be, or things of that sort. Please, again, feel free to reach out to us, email us at this address here, and we will make sure that we take the opportunity to meet with you and hear from you and see how we can incorporate that into this final report. And with that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's a, that's a great presentation. I appreciate that overview. I think we'll be getting to know you all a lot better during the next coming months, and we look forward to that. So as far as format goes, why don't we take questions from the board first, as we, as has been our sort of custom, and then we'll take questions from the audience. And when that time comes, Jim, I'm going to ask you to budge out of the way of the mic, okay? Mr. Bennington Banner there? Thank you very much. So before we get started, questions from the board, comments from the board, all welcome. Jean?
Really quickly, when the report out after you're done your analysis, is that something that you'll be presenting to us personally, or will it be in written form? What's, what's, how's that going to work?
There'll be a written form that we will present, and also a presentation if necessary to follow up.
Great.
But we will actually bring and provide a written form for you to have review, and if need be, we will also be here available to present.
Perfect.
Mr. Lee, before you leave the mic, one of the reasons we were so happy to select the IACP was because, first of all, you're a nonprofit organization, right?
That is correct.
Of all the proposals we looked at, yours was the only, I believe, nonprofit organization. But second of all, it seemed as though your organization offered opportunities for a little bit of a relationship after the study is done, and in terms of materials and things that are available to communities to help them get the work done. Would you be able to fill us in on that a little bit, please?
Yeah, that is correct. Also, on the resources, you want to come up with the policies that we have available? Yeah, just some, she handles all the policies.
Yeah, the IACP has a lot of resources, not limited to the policies, but among the policies, we have 133 different topics, not only model policies, but also documents for consideration for agencies that make their own policies, and research papers as well. And almost all of them at this point are up to date within the last few years, and they're peer-reviewed, evidence-based, best practice, so that's a good resource, definitely.
And we can make that information available so they can get it online as well. So if you need to get access to any information, let us know. We can provide that so that you have those materials available.
That's great. Thank you very much. Other questions from the board?
I had a comment that my only, my main comment before was that we needed really two things, buy-in from the police chief and from the public. And I'm really happy to hear how much you're going to engage with people, because I think that's going to, that's really going to matter a lot. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just called you Bruce, but I meant Bill.
That's okay.
Okay. I anticipated Bruce would have a question, so that's what I was.
I do, but thank you. You mentioned surveys, and I'm wondering how does that, what's the mechanism for participating? I think you mentioned surveys. So what's the mechanism for participating that? Is that going to be something that's going to be posted somewhere? How would an individual?
Well, these are things that we're working out, finding that the best, the one thing we wanted to make sure is confidentiality. So we're looking and trying to identify what best resources we're going to have. So that was the meeting today, and as we sit back and we go back, we'll look to make sure that there are no emails captured, no IP addresses are captured, that individuals can take the survey and feel totally confident that their information will be not captured by us or anyone else. So once we identify that, we will probably reach out to certain entities to be able to post this survey instrument, understanding that they're only going to be posted, and then it would actually connect to us. So we want to make sure that the survey is spread wide. We'll also have flyers out to establish for those who may not be as much internet suavey as possible, that they'll be able to take those surveys, and if need be, we might even print surveys out for those who might not have internet access. We want to make sure that everybody had availability to have their voice heard. So we're looking at every mood, even though it's electronic survey, we also have printed surveys for those who may not have internet accessibility.
Thank you very much.
Good question. Thanks, Bruce. Others? Jeanne? Chad? Anything? No? Okay.
Donald? I just want to confirm that the same is true for the email address, too. That goes directly to IACP.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So the town will not see that at all. It goes directly to our server in Alexandria, Virginia.
Right. Right. And your report back to us will be stripped of all of, any identifying features, so will you give us general some reason?
We won't know, and we totally, no identifiers. All those that we interview will be no identifiers captured whatsoever. Everything will be aggregated into one report. You will not have an idea of who that individual or person was, or group.
Great. Great. Barring any other questions from the board, I guess I would open it up to the general public. If there are questions about the process, I'm going to just repeat myself and say, this is really about the process, about how we go through the next several months. There will be, as you saw in the presentation, plenty of opportunities to express opinions about the police department, or about anything else about town, but tonight, we're just talking about process. So, if anyone has questions or comments about that, would love to, would love to hear them. Mary.
I think I probably know the answer to this, but I'm asking it because it's been a really prevalent question for folks that I know, which is that after someone is in touch with you and reports an experience, a situation, whatever it is, which is totally confidential, is there any mechanism whereby you're then going to go back and check the police records for that person or that date? And if so, how will the person know that the police department isn't going to know that they've been in touch with you?
So, the short answer to that is no. We're not going to go back and look at records to try to verify. We are interviewing people to gather information, to determine a pattern of practice in the police department, to measure it against the best standard. It is not an investigation. It's a study of patterns of practice and measuring it against the best standards that we know. And that's where we think we have a great deal of standing, because of the history of the organization, and who we've worked with historically around best practices. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Come on, people. I know you're dying to ask. Come on up.
So, in terms of reaching out to people in the community, how are there methods that you're going to use to reach different demographics? Say, social media, phone lines, door-to-door? What are the methods that you're going to use to canvass folks in order to get these survey results?
Thank you, Asher. Good question.
Actually, it's a good question. Again, we're going to identify every means necessary to be able to identify, faith-based, community groups, business groups, social models, anything we can. We'll also make sure that we have flyers distributed out, such as you have today. We'll make sure those things are available, to be placed in places where students go. Students, young children, give to their parents, maybe when we meet with the superintendent of schools, something they can give to kids, they give to every parent in the school system. We mean to try to make it available to as many people as possible. It won't be because they didn't know about it, because we're going to try to reach everybody as possible, so that's the best we can do, and hope that everybody takes advantage of it.
It is probably worth just noting that we can only, we can bring it to people, but we can't force them to do anything with it. So, as far as spoon-feeding the solicitation of feedback, it'll be on people of our community in the next month or two, to really be attentive to this process, and to seek the moments of opportunity, because we are trying to move this in a fairly, I think by IACP standards, a fairly short timeframe, so it doesn't go on and on and on. Is that right?
And we're also open to suggestions. If you have any resources of that you want us to utilize, we're open to suggestions. Send us an email. If there's a group or a section that we may miss, please send us an email. Let us know. This is your city, this is your town, and you know it better than anyone else. So, if there's someone that doesn't know, let us know, and we'll definitely reach out to them.
Donald.
Jean. I just wanted to piggyback on what Donald just said, and I noticed, I actually made a note. I thought it was really powerful that when you were speaking, you weren't speaking to us. You were speaking to the community, because this is not our process as the select board. This is the community's process, and I was really glad to, it was a subtle thing, but to me, it was very powerful. And it is up to the community to step up and participate, and I really hope everybody who wants to does.
So, I appreciate that comment, and I think what that comes from is the history of the International Association of Chiefs of Police, working in communities, and understanding that when it comes to policing a community, the power of the police department comes from the community. And we understand that, and that's why I want to reemphasize what the other folks have said. We will fail if we leave this community if someone felt, feels like their voice wasn't heard. And it's important that everybody feels like their voice is heard.
So, I would like to welcome Jim, who was detained by other important businesses that we'll hear more about later. But I'd like to really thank you all for being here. It's a really important thing for our community, and I hope that our community will make the most of having you here. Everybody knows I'm a bit of a penny pincher. It's not inexpensive having you here. We want to get a lot out of this. You know, Curtis Reed challenged us to use this as a building block, to make a strong foundation and continue to progress forward in a logical, linear way. So, we would really love your best thinking. We know we're going to get it, but if there's anything we can do, and I mean the select board, but I think I probably speak for the community, if there's anything we can do to help your process be more thorough and be more thoughtful, we would like to, we'd like to offer that. And thank you for coming to our community.
Thank you.
So, we are going to move on to another exciting topic, which, exciting for all of us, I think, which is to get a summary of the, where the Recreation Center and the Berkshire Y partnership has gotten. And we're going to hear from Jess Rumlow, and we will be hearing some recommendations, a little bit like the last topic we covered. We are not going to discuss the actual recommendations tonight. We're just going to hear Jess's report, and we will be taking up, during the month of October, we'll be taking up what we do with the, with the findings that she brings to us. So, without any further ado, what you got for us, Jess?
Good evening, and thank you for having me again. We'll call this full of possibilities, number two, and continuing on where we left off the last time I was here. We have had, so, the agenda, we're going to talk about the restructure of the staff at the Rec Center. Since the last time I met with you, some things have changed. And then we'll go through our areas of focus that I highlighted last time, youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. And then I will touch briefly on the next steps. So, since the last time I met, we, at the Berkshire Family YMCA, went through a fairly large change. Randy Kennis, our CEO, moved on from his position with the Berkshire Family YMCA and took a job with the Mass Alliance of YMCA. So, he's supporting all 29 YMCA's across the state of Massachusetts now. One of the benefits of that change is that he is still a valued resource of mine. So, I have been asked to step in as interim CEO of the Berkshire Family YMCA. So, with that change, the leadership at the Rec Center had to change a little bit, too. So, what I asked was, I have a Health and Wellness Director from the Berkshire Family YMCA, Chris Woodruck, and also a membership director who has been with the Berkshire Family YMCA for 30 years, Northern Berkshire before the merger, have stepped in to help me provide leadership to the Rec Center and Senior Center. When I go through this presentation, you will notice that the staff have not missed a beat, even though we have had some restructuring. They have all done an amazing job, and we have some great programming that came out of the hard work that they've put in. So, our first area is youth development. So, I talked about Kids Night Out the last time we were here. We averaged about 20 participants in Kids Night Out through the end of the school year. So, that was a drop-in-based program for parents to come drop their kids off on a Friday night from 6:00 to 8:30. The kids got to swim. We got pizza from Ramunto's donated, which was a great partnership for us, and parents got a couple of hours and a night out. We will be starting that program up again this Friday. So, $5, great childcare, kids have a blast. It was an amazing program. We did run a T-ball program. We focused on pre-K through six-year-olds, and we had 30 kids participate in our first youth sports program. This was a large program that the Rec Center ran previously, and we were very excited to bring it back. We also, this fall, are running a combination soccer program. One of the things that we realized over the summer was is there are a lot of youth programs that take place in Bennington. There's a lot of organizations that have stepped up and started offering things. We did try to run three summer programs outside of our camp. One was a hiking program, one was a STEM program, and one was an all-sports program. Unfortunately, during the summertime, we did not see high enrollment for those programs, and they weren't able to run. So, what we looked at is there is a soccer program in Bennington that is already running, but we also have a Northern Berkshire program. So, what we've done is we've combined the two leagues, so we are bringing North Adams and Bennington players together to hopefully start growing a league between the two branches. I see this as an opportunity for us to grow, and really looking at these two locations and saying they're not that far apart, and we can start strengthening both communities and coming together, and kind of blurring that line a little bit. So, we have six soccer participants from Bennington. They'll do practices in Bennington, and then also come for games at Alkenbright Field and North Adams. So, it's the first program that we're really trying to partner with Northern Berkshire and Bennington Rec Center. So, we're excited about seeing where that can take us going forward. On the horizon, Taylor is, has applied for a Velocity Grant, which is a boys' eighth-grade mentor program, which is through Blue Cross and Blue Shield. The grant is through them, and she teams these boys up with mentors from the community, and there's an entire curriculum that's provided. So, we are in the process for applying for that grant. Hopefully, we'll find out in October. She's also been starting conversations with the schools to start doing some pop-up sports programs. What we know we need to do is we need to start connecting with the community, and start getting people to see the Rec Center as a place to come to look for what youth programs are happening, to be on the radar, for people to make calls when they're looking for programs for their kids. And so, how do we do that? We need to go where the kids are, because right now, we're not pulling in a large group of the youth, and so we need to get creative and start going to where they are. So, we're trying to partner with the schools in any way we can to start reaching the youth. We are partnering again with the Committee for the 21st Century Grant, and hoping to be a part of the next application that's going forward as well. And then, Taylor has done a great job partnering with the high school, and getting volunteers from their school-to-work program. So, they're going right now to the Senior Center and offering a tech program for the seniors, and they're also going to be helping do event planning. They're partnering with Meals on Wheels to do a fundraiser, to help Meals on Wheels raise money. And these high school students are going to help the staff at the Rec Center and Meals on Wheels to plan this event. So, it's a great way that we're connecting with youth in a different way. Camp Green Mountain, we averaged 60 campers this week, this summer, per week. We had five camp staff from Bennington directly, and we had five campers on the YMCA scholarship in addition to the subsidy that the town of Bennington already provided to campers. The highlights, they did a Willow Park trip. It was one of the highlights. They absolutely loved being at Willow Park. They did a big field day out there. They had water balloon fights. They were doing frisbee golf and on the playground, so they had a great time out there. We had Gracie from the Bennington Police Department come out to camp. The camp, if you see here, that's one of our counselors, jumping over milk cartons and buckets. The kids made a huge obstacle course, taking just random items that they put out there for them, and as an entire camp, they created an obstacle course that they had to run through, which was great, and they loved that. Of course, we had our swim time, sports, crafts, and STEM throughout the summer as If you ask me what department I want to brag about right now, it's going to be healthy living, and all of the amazing programs that have started since January, which has been pretty remarkable. So, we have an aqua Tai Chi class provided by SASH. This is new to the water. Tai Chi had been done at the Senior Center off and on, but Morgan was like, why can't we do this in the water? This sounds like something that would be great. We've managed on Fridays to get up to 25 participants in that class. He also started an aqua cardio class that took over for one of Andrea Malinowski from Rise Vermont's classes that ended for the summer, so we didn't have to lose a program because of the summer break. So, Morgan took that program on, and he averaged 25 participants for that. And I will just highlight that their water class that always took place on Tuesdays and Thursdays is still raging, and there's more than 40 people that are going to that class. So, that class is still remarkable, but the best part is, is that we're offering more water classes, and we're still getting a great turnout for those. Taylor started a boot camp class at Willow Park, and she averaged five participants for that. She is working with Carrie right now at the Senior Center to try to continue that class during the winter months at the Senior Center from 5:00 to 6:00 as well. So, we don't see that class going away either. Silver Sneakers started out with two classes. We quickly realized that we didn't have a space large enough for how many participants we were going to have, so Taylor is now offering Silver Sneakers twice a day, two days a week, for a total of four classes, and she's averaging about 12 participants each class. She's starting a chair yoga class this week with 12 participants. They had a walking group, they had a therapy walking group, and then a more active walking group that, she said, they actively looked for hills to walk up. That was their goal. And she averaged about four participants for the walking group for each one every week. They do have the computer class coming to, or at the Senior Center, I believe it was starting this week, or sometime soon. They had a summer picnic with about 40 participants, and an ice cream social as well. Some of the highlighted trips that Carrie has coming up are to New York City, Hampton Beach, and the Biggie. So, they are busy. They haven't missed a beat all summer long. We might have taken vacation, but they definitely weren't at the Senior Center. So, they've been doing a great job. So, some of the highlights that I want to focus on, water classes are now consistently offered five days a week. We have our Silver Sneakers classes that have just taken off. And then Taylor, at the end of September, will be going to Live Strong at the YMCA Training, which is the cancer survivorship training. So, she will be able to bring that to Bennington. And then she also got group fitness certified as well, so she was able to teach the boot camp class. And then she's also applied for a grant for enhanced fitness through the YMCA, which is a training that focuses on arthritis for seniors. So, social responsibility. Where are we in the community? This was just a start of the list that Taylor and Morgan gave me. They did the Summer Celebration with Rise Vermont, and I will tell you, it was basically Andrea and Taylor said, we need to do something, and they pulled off a community event and got 150 people there, and I think they maybe advertised it for about a week. So, it was a pretty great turnout for something that they just threw together and wanted to get involved in the community, which was great. Taylor's been going to the Rise Vermont stakeholder meetings. They did the SVSU Welcome Back Celebration. Taylor and Carrie have been going to the elder care meetings. We have the senior staff and the high school students assisting with the Meals on Wheels fundraiser, and just this last weekend, they were at the Family Fitness Fest as well. So, they are out moving along in the community as well. So, from the Transition Committee, we've met two times now, and what came out of it is we wanted more communication, more transparency, what are we doing and where are we going? And so, since our, the last time I presented, we have created an e-newsletter. Al Byshevskin helped us roll that out, and Shannon also supported the team. Our first newsletter went out September 1st. We went out to 150 people. We had 50% clicked on it, or open rate, and a 30% click rate. So, if any of you know what that means, it was pretty good percentages. We were very happy with that. If you're interested in getting on the mailing list, please email Carrie at the Senior Center, and she would be happy to make sure that you get our next edition of the e-newsletter. We also held our first PULSE meeting at the Senior Center on August 21st. That's where we come together with UCS, the Rec Center, and the YMCA to talk about what's going on. Where are we? What are we doing? We talked... We talked about the renovation and we talked about the programming and the next steps for the YMCA. So we will be doing the PULSE meetings every other month. So our next one will be coming up in October. So where are we and where are we going? Meeting with Stu and Dan, we meet every other week. And one of the things that we realized is, one year, it's actually a really short amount of time. We have a lot of great things going and we know we can do so much more, but for us to really figure out what that is, we're looking at, what about three-year management agreement? In this three-year manage agreement, I want the YMCA to be part of your community. I want it not to be a discussion about what the Y is doing, but saying, "Hey, why isn't the Y at the table? Why aren't we just part of the conversation, part of the plan, part of the solution when we start talking about community projects and activities and how can we just be involved?" And so in a three-year timeframe, we'll know what youth programs are going to succeed. We'll have a plan. We'll try things. Sometimes they'll succeed, sometimes they won't, but we continue moving forward. And this gives us the opportunity to make sure that we have a really great plan in place. So what is the YMCA responsible for? What will the town be responsible for? Well, what I will say is the town of Bennington will own and manage the Rec Center facility and land. That's not going to change. And the town of Bennington will establish and approve all membership rates and fees. What the YMCA will do is we'll manage all the staff at the Rec Center. We'll manage all recreation operations and programs. And we'll establish new programs that support youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. In the end, we are partners. This will be a community center where we come together and we work together to make sure we're fulfilling the needs for the community in these three areas of focus. And that's where we want to go. That's what we want to do. And we think we can do it really well and we can do it together. And we will be better because we are working together as a team. Of course, I want you to stay connected with Facebook for the Bennington Rec Center and the Berkshire Family YMCA. If you would like the e-newsletter, Carrie's email is on there and the Berkshire Family YMCA's website as well. And next, questions?
Thank you very much. So that was a combination of a report and a suggestion of where we might go. I would entertain questions from the board on either topic at this point. I'm not sure if you'll be at our upcoming meetings. Hopefully, you will, but there'll be, any decisions that we make about this partnership will be done in an open session and will be done in a way that people can understand them. So nothing is going to happen without people knowing about it. But tonight, we're not going to be debating whether or not to take on a three-year contract. We just want to understand what you're telling us. So any questions from the board along those lines? Bill?
Two questions. One, when you were here on October 22nd, I told you I wanted to talk at 6:00 about how people feel about what you're doing. Do you have a gauge of that?
I think, you know, from speaking with Taylor and Morgan, we've had a lot of positive feedback about the classes that we're offering. I think just the numbers and turnouts in general for our fitness classes have been remarkable. You know, Taylor and Morgan have mentioned that they, you know, they have people who are just excited about the different offerings and being able to come in and engage in classes on a regular basis has been great for them. The youth program, we heard great things about Kids Night Out asking when it's coming back. Camp went well and what we heard about camp was is you're the only program that runs from 7:30 in the morning until 5:30 at night and you serve the needs of the working family and we really appreciate that. They had a great time with the swimming. Overall, it's positive. I think that it's going really well and I will tell you that the staff that I have at the Rec Center are amazing to work with. They're positive, they're energetic, and they are making a difference and I couldn't be more proud of what they're doing.
Yeah, no, they're awesome. And I'm there a lot, so the things that I've heard that are promised would be fixed if you stepped in, like equipment, things like that. My second question is one that I'll leave you with, which is kind of for Stu too. I think I want to start to look at what this is going to cost going forward.
Phase two, you mean, or phase three?
Just looking at what's happening. If the YMCA took over, what's it going to cost the town? What's the bottom line? What's the budget? I mean, and that's not something I want to look at in December when we're going to vote, but in the next month or two, I want to really start to look at, what are you going to charge us? What has it been in the past? How does this net out as an expense to the town? Is it more, is it less? You know, whatever. I don't have any ideas, so I'd just like to know that.
Well, it's depending on the response of the board. We have begun discussions about the recommendation, which is a three-year management agreement. Included in that is a budget proposal from the Y. We haven't flushed out all of those costs and all of those things because, in a sense, it's tentative because we don't really know what direction the board wants us to go in. But I think we would be prepared to lay out those costs if the board says, "Go. Find out what this is going to cost, find out how it's going to work." We'd be, I think, prepared to talk with you in the first meeting in October.
I would really like, I think that there's a lot of people that can't afford to spend anymore at all and those are the people that are using that place and I want to make sure that we don't raise a crisis. That's all.
And that's one of the things we wanted to be clear about, you know, with the plans. It's not the YMCA setting the rates. The Select Board is setting the rates for the Berkshire, or for the Rec Center. And we are managing the staff and we're managing the programming and we're here to support the direction that the community is going in.
And I think it can be better. It's just on the back end and that comes out of the tax base. And in the end, we can choose what we want to do, but I want to have an understanding of that.
We should be prepared, as I say, we should be prepared, first meeting in October.
Great, thank you.
And with a concrete proposal, Bill. So, you know, obviously tonight, not a concrete proposal, a concept. And I think if there's general enthusiasm from this board, then we charge our staff with coming up with a very concrete proposal that we can look at.
Great.
Yeah, great. Good question though. Chad?
I think you kind of answered my question. And with my position at the high school and my position on this board, it's been asked of me several times of the groups, currently the Boys and Girls Swim Team and the Boys and Girls Tennis Teams. You know, there was questions to them about possible increase in fees for them to use the facilities. And I know in the summer or the spring, the tennis courts are active and they're using that. And I told people I would try to find an answer and I didn't have an answer. So my response would be that an increase would only, if a cost or a charge would be approved by the board, not the YMCA.
Correct. The way I see it is I would advise you as to what I thought would be appropriate rates and then ultimately, it would be your decision to determine what the set rates were. I would love to be able to give my staff that this is what rental fees are at the Rec Center, this is what membership rates are at the Rec Center, and being very clear and defined. And what we're doing is we're developing MOUs, Memorandums of Understanding, with each of the groups that are using the facility as rental. And we all know then what the expectations are. And we would take our cues when it came to the fees from you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. So Jess, thank you for the update. And you guys have been really, really busy, which is like really, it's wonderful to see what you've added to the community. I'm just wondering if you can speak to, I know there have been two transition group meetings, is that accurate? And I'm thinking the e-newsletter was one of the things that came, was one suggestion that came out of there. But can you talk a little bit about what the, how the transition group has helped you understand what the community, what would help the community? And, you know, are there lessons to be learned there?
I think the biggest thing that we've learned from the Transition Committee is that transparency is important. People want to know what we're talking about, where we're going, and what the plans are. And that's, you know, the PULSE meeting was one, giving the community another opportunity besides just Select Board meetings to come in and ask questions, to voice concerns, or even to say, "I think this is great" and, you know, continue the good work, but just a way to stay informed. We have a lot going on between the UCS renovation and the management agreement with the Y, just on that piece of land at the Rec Center. And I think that there's a lot of questions going on. And so the more that we can talk about it, the more we keep kind of relevant in the community and talking, I think that the community will find a little bit more comfort in where we're going with that. So that's where the PULSE meeting really came in. It was, of course, the first day was the downpour where it was like torrential downpour that day, so the turnout wasn't wonderful. But I really hope as we move further along with the renovations with UCS at the Rec Center, we'll see more people turning out. Because that's even from a member's standpoint, you know, what construction do you need to be concerned about? Where are we going? When, you know, like, are there going to be times where we might have to close a section of the Rec Center in order to do things? We're going to be able to communicate that and be more transparent and make sure people aren't surprised by anything that's taking place. And so the community meeting is a great way to stay informed and I really encourage people to join us for those. And I think it was just, the Transition Committee helped highlight maybe what the community was feeling. Some of the people who haven't gotten to talk to us, they were able to speak on their behalf, which was great. And I think we had two really good, concrete ideas come out of it. And hopefully, in the end, you know, most people aren't going to say, "Well, I don't know where you're going and what you're doing." That it's just out there for everybody.
Other questions, thoughts, comments, observations?
Can you tell me more about the kind of outreach that you're doing to, you know, get the target audiences or groups to become more involved?
Rise Vermont's been a huge partner for us. We also, you know, through our connections at the Senior Center, we work with SASH, Elder Services, different agencies that help bring that senior population. You know, one of the big things we talked about when we started supervising over at the Senior Center is that they should be using both facilities and how do we get them to come in and start utilizing the Senior Center and the Rec Center combined? And so that's been really great that Taylor's been a face between the Rec Center and the Senior Center and helping kind of continue that conversation between both branches. I'll even tell you, Taylor, because the Rec Center was closed last week, she went down to Northern Berkshire and she was running into Bennington Rec Center members at our Northern Berkshire branch. And they love the fact that they were seeing her down there. She's a common face and brings some comfort to that. Taylor and Morgan, they are at every school event they can get to because that's where the kids are. That's how we can reach out to where the kids are and get them to start coming in to our programs as well. So we're trying to be strategic, both looking at the seniors and the youth. We did try a lunchtime fitness class, which unfortunately didn't take off. We haven't necessarily really reached the working adults yet, but we'll have time for that too.
So with respect to Y membership, it's transferable to other Y?
So we did partner with each other when we did the pool closing. So Northern Berkshire did their pool closing and our members could come to the Rec Center and then we offered the same reciprocity. So none of our members had to stop using the pool or the fitness center, but the pool is the big piece of that. What I would like to see is with this management agreement, looking at ways that you can become members to both and being able to share that. All YMCA members are nationwide members, so you have access to any YMCA branch. And so we could look at the possibility of trying to find ways to make that work for our Rec Center members as well.
Great. One final question, and Stu, maybe, I think you can probably answer this. With respect to the gross revenue from memberships, what's the, is it balancing out with respect to, you know, what we're paying the Y?
At the present time, I really can't answer that at the present time. I can tell you that we generate about $90,000 a year in membership fees, fees for use of the facility, daily fees, and rental of the pavilions and our fields for use.
And our contract with them per year was?
Our contract, oh my God, right off the top of my head, I don't know. I can't pull that number.
I thought it was 35,000.
But it's, it's, right now, we are paying for the interim director and the aquatics director and the health and wellness employee.
Right.
Those are three folks.
Round number the?
Oh, God.
Was it in the 70s? 70 to 80? I was going to say 75 to 80 is what I thought.
That's ballpark, probably, yes.
So we're not losing money?
No, 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 no. And we also, remember, she mentioned that we do subsidize the Camp Green Mountain to tune up, I think it's $29 per attendee, so that their fees can be reduced. And obviously, we continue to maintain the center. We continue to pay all of the costs of operations of the center. So our budget went up about 1% or 2% for this current fiscal year from last year and we're well within budget, even with the contract with the Y.
Right. But we don't have a specific proposal yet and when we do, we'll look at some real hard numbers and push the numbers. I'd like to keep this topic moving along. Do you two have any pressing business before I open it up to the public?
I just have one question and if you could go back to the previous page that talked about your proposal, I think that's the one. What I was looking for up on the left side is more Senior Center questions, I mean, or at least inclusion. And can you identify where on the left-hand side of the, under the management, is, does the Senior Center piece come in?
So with the Senior Center, obviously, Healthy Living would fall under that bucket in addition to Social Responsibility. So either one of those areas would give room for recognition of those programs that we would be offering. Taylor, the majority of the programs that she's offering are at the Senior Center and senior-based at this point in time and that would still be part of what we are providing.
Okay, thank you. So questions from the audience? Welcome questions and comments. Come on up. Good evening.
Hi.
Could you state your name, please?
Nancy White.
Yeah, good, yeah.
I'm very concerned about the lack of information and the financial details we have gotten so far. It appears that Bennington is the only town or city that has a management contract with you so far. Is that correct?
A management agreement, yes, but this is not the first time that we've ever entered into a management agreement. So the majority, we've had two other management agreements since I've been with the YMCA for six years. One was with the Northern Berkshire YMCA, which we entered into a permanent partnership. And that's when we became the Berkshire Family YMCA. And then we also entered into a management agreement with the CYC program. And last year, we turned that into a permanent partnership as well. So we've had two successful management agreements.
I understand, but those are all nonprofit groups. Bennington is the first group that you're teaming up with using a taxpayer-funded budget. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's why I'm concerned because it seems like we're going to have too much money that's going to be swapping back and forth and we won't be able to keep track of it.
So that will be a concern to address to the Select Board when we get ready to make that decision. We do not want to put Jess in the spot about that kind of stuff.
But I think people need to understand that these are taxpayer-funded dollars that we're mixing with the YMCA. When the Y was here in Bennington before, I don't believe we were paying any of their bills. I think they paid their own bills. Have you been talking, or I'll ask you, has the Y been talking with the school system and has UCS been talking with the school system? This is the town budget, after-school programs, United Counseling, the early childhood education. Have they been talking with the schools? Because that money should be coming from the school budget.
I think that's a fair question about reports. You know, is that something that you would have a report on over the past quarter that you've been working on at all? Your interactions with the school, directly with the schools, I think.
We've had interactions with them to offer programming and support, but we haven't entered into any kind of contractual agreement. We're not exchanging funds at this point in time with them.
Very concerned with the fees for the after-school programs and the only thing I have to look at is Pittsfield. People in Bennington don't have $94 a week to pay for their kids to do just the after-school programs. I've heard from the board you've talked about snow days. I know you do before school. Again, we need to understand where this money is going to come from.
So you're looking at one, two different states. So Massachusetts, we are licensed childcare providers, which mean we also get state funding for our voucher program. So the state actually sets our rates for our childcare program and our after-school program. So we are running a state-funded program at that point in time and our rates are dictated. One of the things I can say to that is that all of our childcare and school-age programs are vouchers, so you can get vouchers, so they're subsidized from the state. Then the YMCA also does our own annual campaign and we provide subsidy through our scholarship program up to program up to 50% for families who need support in affording childcare. Once again, the Berkshire Family YMCA is all about providing programs and services to all. And so we try our best to make sure that we're not turning anyone away for the inability to pay. And that is a commitment that we make as an organization every year.
Thank you, Nancy. I'd like to wrap this item up. So if you have one more question, go ahead, and I'm going to make space for anyone else that wants to talk.
Well, I have two, but I'll go with one. At the last Transition Committee meeting, and I believe when the committee was announced, they were supposed to meet four times a year, correct?
Yes. We did say that we would meet four times a year.
So you've missed a meeting?
No. There were two more meetings scheduled, but the feedback that we got from the community was that we should open up the meetings, make them more broad in scope, and that's why they became the full.
Okay. At the last meeting, did you discuss the person at the senior center contacting Manchester and the senior centers in New York State?
I don't believe at the last meeting I discussed that.
The Transition Committee meeting, did I read that in the notes?
I don't believe so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your statements.
Did the girl, the woman who runs the senior center, did somebody ask her to contact Manchester and Housick Falls and Granville to talk about coordinating programming for seniors and utilizing the senior center more?
I believe there was a conversation about that. It might have come from her, that she was meeting with other senior center.
Okay, well, that needs to be discussed.
Okay.
We pay for the senior center in Bennington for our seniors and the people in North Bennington. If we're going to open it up for people in Bennington County and New York State, we need to understand if they're going to be paying a fee.
Okay.
No, no, I think, I think of what you're, you're kind of understanding, her point was to meet with other senior centers to just share ideas.
I thought it said to coordinate, well, I'm just concerned that this has started in Bennington, it's going to spread throughout Bennington County and New York State, and we in Bennington are going to be paying most of the bills.
Well, there'll be a good hard look at this when we get to budget time, Nancy. Thank you for your comments and your questions.
I can answer. There are already people who do not live in Bennington using the Bennington Senior Center. And the Select Board was, we proposed a fee for membership. The Select Board said no. So we already have people from Housick Falls, Arlington, Shafterberry, Pownell, already coming to the senior center and enjoying the programs.
I understand. I was here the night that was discussed, and I think you raised the question about a fee, but people said, "What's a few more people?" I agree, a few more people is nothing. If we're reaching out to other towns in the county and outside the state, that's something totally different.
No, that's not hap, we're not reaching out to grab membership. Shannon is correct. We're reaching out simply to gain understanding of what they're offering and how they're offering programs, to improve our programs for who attends the senior center.
Well, we need a lot more information at televised meetings. It's not fair to have the Transition Committee meetings that aren't televised. The Pulse meeting should have been held here. The best way you can reach out to people in the town is to use these meetings. It's been done that way for 50 years, and unfortunately, for the last seven or eight years, a lot of meetings haven't been held here. They've been held other places.
Other comments on this topic tonight? Any other questions or comments? Okay, Jess, I want to thank you for your report. I want to also ask the Board if there are any last questions for Jess. And I think we don't, I don't know, would we like to take a vote on, we don't need to probably take a vote, but let's get a sense of the group of whether or not we would like the town staff to come up with, to work with the Y, to come up with a concrete proposal that we could consider. Is that what I heard you saying, Bill?
I'd like to look at something, yeah.
Chad, how do you, yeah, can feel, Jeanie?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay. So Stuart, and I, too, feel that I'd love to look at something concrete. Very excited about the possibilities. Seems like a great expansion of programs, which is what we really want to see. And so we're enthusiastic, and let's see, let's see some specifics.
All right, sounds good. We can do that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
So we have next, something for which I need to at least lightly apologize for, which was the last time that we considered a revised purchasing policy. Go ahead, Jim. Notwithstanding whatever Mike Bethel said earlier tonight, this is a process that started over a year ago, and there were conversations even before that that went on about the existing purchasing policy being somewhat outdated. And so Tom Jacobs and I and Carson Thurber took it up in the last fall, worked on it a little bit this winter, this past winter. When it became apparent that Bill was going to join the Board, he expressed an interest in joining our group, so we rolled him in, and he brought a lot of great insights as well. So I think I would like to ask this Board to completely forget about the last presentation that we did on this and to make this the first reading of what I consider to be a revised purchasing policy that we have been through over the past year with a pretty fine-toothed comb. And first reading means to me that we'll read it tonight, we'll ask questions, we'll invite any audience questions, and then we will sit on it and think about it and presumably take it up again at our next meeting. And if it feels like the right way to go, and nobody has any great qualms at that point, we'll pass it. So the other thing that happened is at our last meeting, you may remember that we had a little scheduling problem, and so Melissa was going to join us. And she did join us, but by the time she had joined us, we'd already kind of, I'd made a hash of it already, and it was such a train wreck that I think she had to leave or something. But anyway, she's here with us tonight, and she can give us a little more intelligent insight into what we're looking at. Thank you, Melissa.
Hi. A little disappointed that the room cleared out for the purchasing policy.
Would you pull that mic right close to your teeth, please? Thank you. I know you hate it, but.
I do. All right, so you have, the Select Board has a copy of the proposed purchasing policy, and for the public, the purchasing policy proposal has been posted on BenningtonVT.org. As Donald mentioned, the current town of Bennington, well, I'm sorry, that's not what you mentioned, but the current town of Bennington purchasing policy that's in existence today was adopted nearly 40 years ago in 1982. There had been some revisions, but it has become extremely outdated in both style and content. In early 2008, our staff began the process of updating the policy. And after reviewing several models, which include the VLCT, which is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns template, SVSU's policy, the State of Vermont's policy, and various municipalities, both inside and outside of Vermont, we decided that the VLCT model was the most direct, clear, and in line with the town of Bennington's process and business structure. Even though the content of the old, or all existing, policy is not that far off from the VLC template, the style isn't straightforward. It contains work instructions and a lot of unnecessary reflection on the art of purchasing. It's very lengthy. Given this flowery and outdated style, it made sense to completely scrap the old policy, making it virtually impossible to do a red line showing the changes. There was just zero comparison. After submitting a draft proposal to the Select Board, which I believe was in April of 2018, a purchasing policy was, committee was created, and it included Select Board members as well as town staff. We reviewed the purchasing policy line by line and together came up with a more clear, concise, and modern policy. There are four key areas within the policy. The first area is a code of conduct that addresses affirmative action, conflict of interest, gifts, gratuities, and donations. But please note that although we have a purchasing, I'm sorry, a personnel manual that includes guidance on all of these areas as well as the disciplinary procedures for nonconformance, we felt it was important to include additional emphasis within the purchasing policy, given the nature of what's included in it. The second key area is a designation of the purchasing agent and dollar limits for purchasing categories. We use universal terms for those categories, which are recognized by federal regulations. And there is also additional guidance for situations in which the policy may need to be more stringent or specific, such as federally funded grants. The third key area is the, discusses the sealed bid process. And lastly, the fourth area is a limited number of exceptions that allows the town manager to approve purchases that meet the exception criteria outlined in those exceptions. These are competitive proposals, sole source purchases, emergency purchases, and professional In closing, although the format of this policy is written dramatically different, the key areas are basically the same as what is in existence today and what we follow today. But the standout changes are an increased limit that department managers are allowed to approve, an updated code of conduct that is more appropriate under today's standards, a more extensive tiered approach to purchase categories and limits, and a more formally documented, more formally documented requirements of what situation should be communicated to the Select Board.
Well done. So far, you're doing great. Keep it up.
That's what I got.
Okay, that's what you got? Well, I would like to thank you for the effort you've put into this. So to the Board, I would like to say, this is not an item where we're throwing it at the wall to see if it sticks. This is something that a lot of work has gone into. As I say, it's been a year in the making. Melissa has offered draft after draft. It's largely based on boilerplate from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, which we believe to be above reproach and to be one of probably the best standards that we could use. In addition, you know, comparisons were made to other large communities and then customized to Bennington's individual needs. So I do think a lot of work has gone into this, and I would ask for us to kind of bear that in mind as we're going through this. The second thing is that this, the very last meeting we had on this, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we had, we had a final tweak to make on the last item, and that was made too late for this to go out with your Select Board packet. So you may or may not have seen that it came out by email from Stuart on Friday. So if you didn't get it, don't worry. I apologize for that, but we will have an opportunity to kind of think about it. And during the course of the next couple of weeks, I think I'd like to invite everyone to get questions to me or to communicate directly with either Stuart or Melissa about questions. But in the meantime, if you have specific questions about this policy for Melissa or comments you'd like to make, I would certainly welcome them from the Board. Bruce?
It's under the exceptions, and it's, it should be relatively straightforward, page four. It looks like it's, well, anyway, I will read it better, but it looks like, after it says exceptions, it says, "The following exceptions may apply." Why may? And when would they not apply? And if we're going to say something may apply, then we actually have to say when it wouldn't apply. Otherwise, it's not a policy about when they're going to apply. So I personally would just suggest we delete that phrase, but if that's not what the...
Because if you think about, like, professional services, we may hire an attorney for a small project, and we may have an attorney, a different attorney practicing, like, for the town. Like, I don't know, like, I can see the "may" working.
Or we may put somebody through the bid process in that case, or given circumstances that we feel warrant, you know, are under this list, we may not. So it's not that...
You're going to have to, I'm sorry, and you, I think what I need to do is not do this now, because I'm sure I'm going to get, I'm not going to get understanding, so, which is what I really want. So let me just suggest that when we say that something may happen, we actually have to also, in my view, say when it, when it's going to happen and when, "may" is too slippery a word. That's what I'm trying to say in a nutshell. So if you and I can have a conversation, or maybe Bill and I can have a conversation, or somebody can have a conversation, either explains to me why we need this slippery word, which I think is one that I would prefer never to use in a policy, without specifying when it's used and when it's not.
And take the word out.
Well, so, you know, I'm not sure we want to use this as an editing time, but I'm just...
No, we're not going to use this as an editing time, but...
I'm just suggesting that that's a place that's problematic for me.
And to be clear, with the, the structure of this document is, is really about getting bids and is about coming up with, with a logical way of going about things that involves a lot more, not a lot more, but involves a great deal of care in how it's done.
Right.
And the exceptions, exceptions to that are not ones that we expect to be used or would want to be used often or loosely. You know, these, these exceptions are something that are there for a reason, but they're, but we expect that most of the town's business would go through the rest of the policy, the first part of the policy.
I am highly supportive of the rest of the document. Trust me, I'm, that's not, that's not my point.
Okay.
My point is that the exceptions part is a part of the policy.
It is.
And it's been my life's work, at least for the last 30 years or so, to worry about how is something going to be utilized down the road when you, we are all kicking up dust. So it seems to me that I want this to be correct. And right now, I am not convinced that that's the right, I would be happy to delete the whole sentence and be done with it. That would, that's the, to me, that's the easiest one.
And that's...
Because I don't think it's necessary.
No, that's totally fine. We could do that.
We can take a look.
I'm really happy with this policy, especially with our meeting, our last-minute meeting and the last changes. I'm really happy with it. But I'll definitely meet with you this week or whenever.
Sure. Well, or you and I could talk, or we could get on the phone with Melissa, and we could just review that comment.
Sure.
So thank you for that.
That's, yeah.
Other Board comments? Jean?
I had mentioned at the last meeting that possibly we should put a date when this should be reviewed. It's not in here anywhere. I don't know if that was something you didn't think was necessary. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an oversight.
No, I do actually recall that, and I was trying, I watched the meeting.
Okay.
And did try to make notes of everything, but that, I apologize, was not something that I brought up when I listed all of it.
And it might not be appropriate that it's in the policy, that review date, or, you know, every five years or whatever. I just wanted to make sure that it hadn't gotten forgotten, that it wasn't forgotten.
It would be an easy addition, and it seems like a good, good thing to put in, Jean. Thank you for that.
And the other thing, can we just, and maybe this isn't the right time, maybe we need to wait a couple of weeks, but I would like to dig into the professional services item on number, on the bottom of page four. I certainly understand why, you know, when we have a longstanding relationship with a company or a firm, why we don't want to muck that up. I certainly understand that. But how would a new company get in the game if there was a new law firm or a new engineering company that, that popped up? What would, is, there's got to be a mechanism for them to, to submit a proposal to try to drum up some business from the town. So I guess I'm just a little concerned that, you know, if you've been doing business with the town for a long period of time and it's been great, that's fabulous, but is that fair to, to new entities that may come our way?
We spent a lot of time on this.
We did.
We spent most of our time on this.
I'm shocked.
We spent most of our time on this clause.
Okay. I just need to trust that, is that what you're telling?
Well, no, this is a, this is a very, very narrow category, characterized by a high degree of professional judgment, discretion, and continuity, including legal, financial, auditing, engineering, insurance services, and risk management. So it is, it's characterized by things that almost every other part of the, doing business would not necessarily have. This sort of combination of ongoing and very specific items. So we see it as being lawyers, auditors, although we have asked that the practice be that we find a different auditor, auditor every once in so many years to kind of check the thinking. But it's a very narrow group. It's not, this is not a large group.
Some of those, yes, I can see that. Insurance, I mean, we run our insurance on a personal level. We, we contact insurance companies to make sure we're getting the best rate, probably every couple of years. I don't know. It just seems, I'm a little uncomfortable with it.
Well, and I was in the same boat as you, but we finally came down to, I think the best way I can explain it boiled down to, most towns that are this size do this. This is their practice for this act. This is their practice for this actual group of people, that they approve a list on an annual basis, whether it's lawyers or engineers or auditors or whatever. So that's a pretty common practice. But where I fell was I was like, look, you know, I like Rob, but are we going to keep using Rob? I think we should bring in a different auditor every four or five years, just because it's good to have some different look at those things. When you say engineer, there's 18 or 20 different kinds of engineers, mechanical, civil, electrical, like, what is that person? Who is that person? So where we landed is, the reason those got separated out is because when they make a decision on the first three of the exceptions, he'll tell us within 30 days. So if there's an emergency purchase, clearly that purchase needs to be made.
Right.
We shouldn't, we should, politics shouldn't be the part of that at all. But when we get down to the professional service exception, the way I think I worded it was, this is one of those, why wouldn't you tell us ahead of time as opposed to after the fact? And so as of the 30th, April 30th of every year, Stu will provide us with, or whoever is the town manager, will provide us with that list. We can then question that and say, there's a new engineer. We want a different auditor this year. Can you send it out to different auditors because we want a different auditor? We want to look at a different engineering firm? Or of the three different kinds of engineering firms we're hiring, we want to do this? So between April 30th and the beginning of the fiscal year, it then becomes our job to look at that and question that and say, and question those things. We have that period to question.
And April 30th conveniently is the, you know, just after reorganization of the new board. So the whole new board gets to look at the list. And the other addition that he didn't mention is that any contract under this exemption will not exceed one year.
Yeah, that's true.
And so that...
There is an opportunity.
Opportunity continues to arise to kind of question that. And don't forget, we get to see the warrants every month, and so we see, you know, who's on, who's getting those payments.
I mean, I do understand if someone's not performing up to standard, they probably wouldn't be on that list that's being presented to us April 30th of every year.
Let's hope.
That I understand. I'm not worried about that. I was just, didn't want to exclude, automatically exclude people who deserve a shot because we, just because we've been doing business with the same firm year after year after year after year. It was a matter of fairness.
Yep. No, I think the town has to make a case to us that it's in the town's best interest, in the taxpayer's best interest, and the whole community's best interest to keep using that exemption.
Okay, I'll sleep on that.
Yeah, I had similar problems with it, Jeanie, and I'm looking at, Jean. Thank you. Just the expense at bringing up to speed a lawyer or engineer with what we have been doing with the town of Bennington. And, you know, furthermore, if, you know, heretofore, the people, the lawyers, the engineers, et cetera, that we've been working with have an unblemished reputation with us, why would we pile on another layer of bureaucracy for our town manager to have to sort through on a yearly basis? I think it's frankly ridiculous.
I don't. I'm sorry.
Well, you know, it's just, it complicates his job, and, you know, in a sense, it's like having the select board sit on his lap and hold his pen when it comes to evaluating these folks. Herefore, if they have an unblemished record with the town, I think we should continue to work with them, but to have to review each one of them on a yearly basis...
My mother likes to say, "Life is a compromise." And I think in this particular situation, we were balancing two different things. One is what you say, which is true. We have faith that our, the staff we hire are doing good work and we're monitoring it. So they should be allowed to do that unfettered. On the other hand, Bill is making the point that it is fair that every select board should have an opportunity to review, and every new select board member in every select board should have at least an annual opportunity to review these contracts that we're in that are under this particular exemptions thing. So I think it's a balance. Is that characterized right?
I think that's fair.
So I think that's how we got to this somewhat hard-fought last item. Bill, anything to add on that?
No, no, that's, I mean, that's it. We did disagree on it, and ultimately, we landed with this, which I think works. I mean, he presents this with something, and, you know, we may say we want a different auditor this year, just because we've been X number of years with this person, whatever. We may not. I may not be on the board then.
But the requirement to do it on a yearly basis, I mean, that seems onerous and expensive.
I got it, and I agree with you, Jim, and I like the idea of not wanting to slow down our town staff by making them do extra work. But Stuart, we did ask you about this. In fact, you were at the last meeting, and because it was such a short list of people, you seemed unintimidated by providing a list once a year in April to the board.
It's not going to be a lot of work to provide that, the list of individuals or companies that we work with on an annual basis without a contract and have worked with for a long time. That's not going to be a problem. And it's up to the board to say, "Thank you very much for moving on," or, as Bill has suggested, "Well, maybe it's time we look at another auditor. Could you do an RFP to get another auditor?" And in a sense, to answer Jean's concern about new companies that come to town, we are contacted all the time by engineering firms and others who are not necessarily in Bennington, not necessarily even in the region, but they are reaching out because they do municipal business. And they'll send us an email indicating who they are, what they do, what they specialize in. And, you know, frankly, that's how we came to work with Aldridge and Elliott at the wastewater treatment facility. That was, formerly, we were with the Boys and King. So we changed engineers because they appeared to be specialized in what we were looking for at the time. So there are opportunities that come along. If we're working on a new pathway, you might look for a new surveying firm or a new engineering firm to help you with that particular project because you've got an engineering firm working on your water system, and you don't want to burden them or slow them down on the work they're doing. So there will always be opportunities available for new folks.
Good. I'm feeling better.
We did have a lot of conversation about it, and the staff, you know, we did discuss, Bill, and I, and others, we did talk about the fact that we want to be sure, to Jim's point, I think, that if we're asking staff for information, that it's useful information and that it's something that really benefits the select board and the community, we're not just asking for information for the fun of having it and making our town manager and staff have a harder time. But this seemed like a compromise where it was once a year, it was a short list, it gave every select board an opportunity to have some input if it was necessary or to let it go by.
Right. It's almost like just checking in.
Yep.
You know, taking a pulse, checking in, asking a couple of questions. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Great. Other questions? Other concerns? No?
Well, that's not really, I've got to just point out that that's not how it's spelled out here. You know, this, Jeanie's speaking off the cuff about, you know, just checking in, but that's not spelled out here.
There's no requirement. They're not submitting an RFP or anything. There's no requirement for the companies to do anything. It's just our opportunity to just check in, make sure...
And again, it's a very narrow band of people for whom it's really in our best interest to continue to use their services. Otherwise, they go back to the RFP process and they go back to the more orderly process that most vendors would go through. So this is meant to be a narrow exemption, right?
Jean, I'm not objecting to what he said. It's just that that is not spelled out here.
Okay.
It's a very narrow exception. It's universally understood as a best practice in Vermont, period. I mean, every town this size doesn't, with the exception of Burlington and South Burlington. But all the other towns up and down our size have pretty close to exactly this language. Ours is actually easier to get through because he just gives us a list. There's nothing else. All the other ones are likely you have to come up and...
I also think it's...
...say you're going to hire this person.
I also think it's good for the lawyers, whoever is on this list, to know that it's not automatic every year. We do have an opportunity to change our minds or bring in another company. Now, that we're planning on doing that, I'm not saying we are.
True. Not only is it not automatic, though, but almost all of these contracts could be terminated at any moment.
Great.
So they, these are not usually contractual relationships. These are usually hired-at-will relationships.
Okay. But still, it's good for them to know that we are paying attention.
But we're offering a slight exception to the purchasing policy, RFPs and all that heavy stuff, for the services that it's in our very best interest to continue to use.
For the small group of people.
Right. To have, use our discretion to decide what, who's on that list. Yep. Okay?
And we've not been doing that. That's something new, right?
This is, this whole policy is a combination of new and old, but it's...
But that particular thing...
That particular piece we have not been doing.
Okay.
Yeah. So, Melissa, I'm sorry, we're doing our little internecine struggle here.
I'm loving it. You just take away...
We haven't even asked you to talk, so why don't we, just any last comments from you before we wrap this conversation up?
No.
No? Melissa really uses mic hog, isn't she? No. Melissa, thank you very much for taking so much time on this. So I do want to point out that our staff has had a purchasing policy for a long time and has followed that to the best of their ability, and it was actually the staff that brought to the select board's attention that our policy was inadequate and not sufficient. And as a result of staff coming to us and saying, "Hey, this purchasing policy is stale." We had the opportunity to revamp it and, you know, add some principles to it, affirmative action, conflict of interest that was already kind of in there, but I think it's a much better, much stronger document, and so thank you for the time you've put into it. We'll consider it and potentially adopt it at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business is to appoint boards and commissions. This is the, this may be difficult because not everybody was able to be at the interviews, but we, you know, we heard earlier, Jim was, I think, just at a climate meeting, but we heard earlier that we really are in a form of climate emergency, and we probably read in the paper that there are a lot of things that the climate advocates would like us to do as a community around fossil fuels, around divesting from fossil fuels and things like that. But we also have a lot of other things that we need to prioritize, the residential efficiency, industrial conservation, transportation efficiency, local food systems, and renewable energy development, just to name a few. And as we pointed out at our last meeting, there are over 47 different recommendations in our current town plan that relate directly to energy. So this board has decided to create an energy committee, and we are excited about that. We've interviewed a number of good candidates. We have decided that we would like to populate the committee with seven members to begin with, which is an odd number, so there would potentially never be a deadlocked vote. And it also allows for possible expansion of the committee, should that become necessary at some point in the future, if more people are needed, if the committee identifies that they need particular skills or knowledge. And the other thing the board has, I think, decided is that we would really like to have Bill Scully be part of this committee because he's got deep knowledge of energy and whatnot. But there's at least one little issue that comes with that. So before we, before we do a little tally vote here, I'd love to just give Bill an opportunity to describe your situation, please.
I currently have a net metering contract with the town, which I believe is 20 years, and we're in year four, something like that.
Is it four?
Fourth year-ish, whatever. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a conflict that would be an issue at all, but you should consider it, you should know about it. We're in year four, it runs for 20 years. I'm not planning on building any new hydro plants and opening any new net metering things, but it's there, and so we, you know, you should be aware of it.
So before we even start this, I would like a motion from the board on his, well, maybe we talk about it first, but then I think, after we talk about it, I'd like a motion from the board, either that we feel comfortable with his potential conflict of interest, or we don't feel comfortable with it.
And I can recuse. One of the things we didn't talk about is the fact that it's a, it's a board that doesn't take any action. It's an advisory board, so I would be advising, I can recuse if we're advising on net metering contracts because technically that would be the point at which there would be a conflict.
We would expect you to recuse it, since it would be a select board...
Yeah, I would need to recuse myself actually from this board as well. But it is an advisory board. It's a board that we don't spend how many money. So we just try to advise people.
Right. So we're looking for insights and potential priorities that would all come back to the select board for our consideration or ignorl. You know, we could do whatever we wanted with that information from the energy committee, but I'm expecting that there might be some good things that come from it. So, select board people, what's your pleasure on this? Opinions?
I'm fine with Bill being on there. You know, he brings inside baseball to the board.
Okay.
Is there any, is there anything that will come up before the end of the 20 years that would have to be, you know, that could be a potential conflict? I mean, is there any, there's no negotiation. It's just, it's a contract, it's a 20-year contract.
Yep.
Any other questions, Chad? No? How are you feeling?
I don't see, as being that it's an advisory board, I don't see a concern.
Okay. Same here?
No issue.
Okay, great. So I would like, I'd accept a motion to, just so we have a, so Bill feels free and clear, I would accept a motion that the select board invite Bill Scully to be one of seven members of this committee.
I would move that.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any recusals?
I'm going to recuse.
Good man. He's practicing. Okay. So you have in front of you a ballot, a number of people applied for this. We are thankful to everybody. We're not going to accept everybody. We had more applicants than we will be accepting, but I'm going to ask each board member very briefly just to vote for seven, not more than seven.
Including Bill.
Bill is one of the seven. If you've already written down more than seven, cross one off. But I would ask you to put seven on this, and then we'll pass them down to the town manager and let him count things up.
Stu, do you have copies for us electronic guys?
I have. Donald, because I didn't attend, and I know a lot of these people on the board, I just don't feel comfortable voting at this time, so I'm not going to participate in the vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
I should have held on to them, since the manager's report's coming up next, shouldn't I?
We can go on a little bit.
Yeah, we can.
Thank you. For the future agenda.
Yeah, maybe we'll do that.
Probably talk about the Climate Caucus.
So, thank you, everybody, for that. We will, Jeanie, would you be willing to just briefly talk about the upcoming meeting that we're hoping, one of the reasons we wanted to push this through tonight is because there's a meeting coming that we're hoping to invite all of the newly appointed energy committee people to attend if they can.
Yes. So BRCRC is holding a meeting Thursday, the 12th. So this Thursday, which I believe is at 5 o'clock, it's 5:00 or 5:30, for a select board, for energy committee members from all the towns in the county. And it's followed by a transportation meeting, which will also be highly informative for energy committees. So we do want to get that information out to the individuals selected to be on the energy committee as quickly as possible.
It's, the one this week is 5:30 at the Manchester Community Library. Followed immediately that night by Vermont, by Vermont's Energy Future and Kappa.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, except, no, there's a transportation, no, so there is, it's followed immediately by a transportation meeting at the same location in Manchester.
And also that night.
Yeah. By that, yes.
The Kappa event.
And also that, and then the following on the 18th is the Drive Electric in Vermont thing happening.
Right.
Right.
Very exciting.
A lot of energy stuff coming up.
Very exciting.
Are you, would you like to just read off the, whoever the seven people will be on our...
I can, I can tell you that every, every individual on the list received at least one vote. The top vote-getters were David Adolphus, Michael Kuser, Bruce Lierman, Deanna Oaks, Bill Scully, of course, Wendy Sharkey, and Nancy Thompson.
Okay. Thank you very much for doing the quick addition. We would like to, again, thank everybody who stepped up to throw their hat in the ring for that. It's a really important time for energy, and we really appreciate what this committee will do. We look forward to hearing the work. So Bill, keep us posted, and... So, Bill, keep us posted, and the first, the first order of business will be for this group to pull itself together and get clear about meeting notification, minutes, the orderly process that has to happen with every committee of the Select Board to follow the open meeting law. And once, having done that, there'll be a review of the town plan, energy chapter, and then a look forward to the next year, at which point we will have a chance at this time next year to decide whether or not we keep the Energy Committee going.
Agreed.
So, that's the plan. The next item on this is the manager's report. Stuart, what have you got for us tonight?
I do have one action item that came up late in the week, and I would prefer not to, not to hold it. We have a request from Nancy Thompson, newly elected to the Energy Committee, to close the lower portion of Grandview Street on October 6th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. to have a neighborhood block party. I bring this to you because the board is the only one authorized to close streets. I run this by the chief of police. He has no issues as long as the proper cones are placed and people are informed, and I have been assured that they have cones and most, or all of the neighbors have been notified. So, I'm looking for a positive vote to close the street on that date for that time.
Okay. I'd accept a motion on that one way or the other.
I'll move.
Okay. Anyone second?
Second.
Thank you, Bruce. Any discussion on closing Grandview for a block party? Sounds like fun. Anyone want to be a real wet blanket? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Stuart. What else?
All right. Just, there was an article in the paper, I think today, that talked about the auction of 217 Washington Avenue. This was a no-reserve bid operation run by town staff. The high bid was for $10,000. The deposit was placed. The high bidder is Charles Jewett of Monument Avenue in Bennington. He is a retired preservationist and plans to restore the home as a single-family dwelling and bring it back to productive use. So, I think that's a very good outcome for that particular property. I'll skip the police department assessment because we had that here tonight. I'm happy to announce that the first digester cover was placed last week.
Yay!
Which gives us additional storage, should really go start to address the odor issues we've been suffering through. And the consultants will be on site this week to test, fire up the necessary operations to make that digester work. So, that is very good news. Our compost facility is up and operating, and we had a meeting out there last week, and I can tell you that, at least on that particular day, the odors were minimal.
So, they should start, keep moving down for the people that wrote us?
They should dissipate entirely over the course of the next week or so.
Great.
So, that's, that's really good news.
Before he wants to, just great job making lemonade out of lemons. I think getting that composting facility up as a, as a way of solving that problem was brilliant. It involved ingenuity and sort of staff taking.
And it was, it was our staff that came up with the idea.
Yeah, great.
And I can tell you, in the interim, we have had people, because things were down and we were having to check the plant on a regular basis, we've had people coming in at midnight for two or three hours to make sure the plant was functioning properly. Our staff have really stepped up and kudos to them for their effort in keeping the plant operational and addressing these issues that we did not anticipate, and I think they've done a hell of a job. Morgan Spring, we now own 747 Main Street. Dan and I have a meeting tomorrow at 11:00 in the morning with a potential investor. They have been working at their expense with the engineers, the town's engineers, on addressing some of their concerns about the way the system is set up and will operate. And we will, hopefully, we're getting closer to a proposal wherein they will participate in the funding of the relocation of the delivery system.
Which obviously would come before this board for full consideration and all that stuff.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I will be traveling to the League of Cities and Towns offices on September 18th. The League has agreed to host an informational, an informational meeting for other towns. The attorneys for the town will be at the meeting to present what they have found with regard to the opioid problem throughout the state of Vermont. And the League asked me to be there just to give the town's perspective on why we decided to join the suit and hopefully others. I've heard that the Brattleboro town manager is extremely interested in potentially bringing Brattleboro on as well.
Sounds like they should be, from the news, yeah.
Unfortunately, yes, they have a problem there. And the unfortunate news, the legal action against the splash pad general contractors has been filed. We are waiting a word now from their response to that filing, and we're also waiting word from our attorney as to when we then might pursue the renovations to the facility with the funds on hand. So, it won't be up and running probably before the snow flies, but certainly we'll be getting a good product in the end.
Excellent. Thank you.
And that's it.
As far as future agendas go, we are looking at a, Shannon, are we looking at a housing topic on September 23rd?
Yes.
So, we'll be looking to take a little bit of a deep dive, or at least something of a dive into housing in the Bennington area. We'll be talking, as we have with our other umbrella topics, we'll be talking to a number of the people who help us out with that. Do we think we will have IACP business at our next meeting? I guess we'll wait and see on that.
I don't believe so. They will be gathering, I think, information, I think the next, the next real big push for them will be the October 7th timeframe.
So, right now, we have that on. We have purchasing policy, second reading, and we will have an executive session regarding contracts. That's all I have right now. I think I did want to ask this board, October 14th is Indigenous Peoples' Day, the former Columbus Day. I think traditionally it's, we've, we've held our meeting anyway. Is everybody happy to meet on October 14th? Stuart, how do you feel about that?
We've been doing it for 27 years, as far as I can remember, so I don't know why we changed that.
I thought it was sometimes yes, sometimes no.
No.
Jason Morrissey used to have golf tournaments or something.
Oh, yes. There was, that, we did break one year for a golf tournament.
Okay.
That's correct.
So, I'm going to get a note from Jason then.
Wasn't my problem.
So, we'll, let's plan to meet on the 14th and the 28th as regularly scheduled. Other business that board members would like to share, before we start, I think I'd like to just share, I didn't realize, we all knew Garlic Fest was wonderful, but I didn't realize that it was over 16,000 people that came to Garlic Fest, which is really like the size of the Bennington area.
The town. The size of the town.
So, we briefly doubled for Garlic Fest and then went back to ourselves. But anyway, that was really a great accomplishment and just can't, we just can't thank enough all the many partners that helped with that. And I think the second thing is buried in some of the materials we got, she's here, so I'm going to call her out, but buried in the materials we got is a community development report. And we have a lot of great employees in this town, but Shannon, you are doing a wonderful job pulling things together. You know, the various things you're doing with all the different parks and the Pulse Meeting and the community center and the school age programs and the Vermont Begins Here marketing campaign, which is now up and running, and the other, all the different groups you're pulling together, it's really very impressive, and I think this board couldn't be happier with the work you're doing. So, just wanted to make sure you know that we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Other business from the board?
Chad?
Food Truck Festival, is that this weekend?
Yeah.
Yes. Food Truck Festival, Quilt Fest, you know, it's festival season, so. It's also sports season, so sports at the high school are active. John James Tournament kicks off Thursday, and championship is on Saturday.
Great. Chappy chip. What do you got, Jeanie?
I just want to say that I happened to walk by the park at 336 Main Street today by Katie Cleaver, and it looks fabulous. It's, it's looking like a park, right? I mean, it's not completely done yet, but you can see how beautiful it is. And I guess I want to, I want to thank the town because we own it, and I also want to thank Heather Meneely, who donated it to the town, and to the BBC, who has raised the money and overseen the development of the, of the beautiful shape that it's taken. So, it's another, we just have so much going on, and the parks in town are all, like, are just fabulous.
We should have a little party when it gets all that.
We should.
We could have ribbon cutting. I know Jim likes to cut ribbons.
I've never cut a ribbon.
Jim, what do you got tonight?
I just want to let people know that I joined the Legislative Climate Solutions Caucus, and we had our first teleconference today, that's why I was late. And it's a multifaceted approach to trying to contain the carbon that Vermont disperses. And we're working, the governor and the state are working very closely to follow the Paris Accords in reducing carbon footprint. In addition, one of the things that we talked about is that, I don't know who in the legislature at what, at what time, they, there was an arbitrary number of credits that municipalities could use in sequestering or lowering their carbon footprint. So, we're discussing expanding that so that we can take advantage of all our rooftops here in Bennington and municipalities around the state. In addition to that, a piece of legislation that I'm working on with a couple fellow legislators is that any new construction in the state has to be carbon neutral. And by that, I mean, well, let me just back up a little bit. Two properties that I worked on this year, huge, had solar arrays that covered all of their electric needs, including heating their properties. And they were getting, their meters were running backwards. So, we could do that with new construction and even, you know, down the road, property transfers, doing that as well, and requiring that the solar installers be domiciled in the state of Vermont, so that they're paying payroll taxes and they're employing Vermonters.
It's good stuff, Jim. I hope you'll stay dialed into the Energy Committee and.
Oh, I will. Oh, one other thing. Tim Briglin, who's the chairman of the Energy Committee, he told me something that they worked on, and he's the chairman of the board in Thetford. He said that they went to LED lighting, and they're a very small town. They saved $20,000 a year, 20, just by converting, you know, there was an upfront expense, you know, to do the LED transfer, but man.
It was an investment.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim. What do you got, Bruce?
Just a couple of things. Kudos for the folks working on Stark Street Park. That looks very exciting. I get a chance to see all this stuff when I'm walking my grandson around, around town, and I'm really thrilled to see, and I can't wait to see what, what's going to be happening. The other, the other item, I think, I just want to lift up the work of Kappa and Bennington College. For years, we, there seemed to be a greater sense of divorce that didn't need to be there. And I've been a participant in their public policy forum for the, for the last three years, and this, this one that's happening right now, if anybody out there wants to have a really fascinating time with college students and really interesting people, this, this week at 7:00 at Kappa is Vermont's Energy Future with Senator Chris Bray, Bob Dasas from Green Mountain Power, and Darren Springer from, who's the general manager of Burlington Electric. Really interesting group of people, and I highly encourage everybody's participation if you can do it.
Thank you, Bruce. And a good PSA. Jeanie, what do you got?
Shannon, Vermont Begins Here. If you Google that, will you get to the website?
Yes, it's Vermont spelled out, begins here, dot com.
Okay, great. The sidewalk on Kosher Drive is happening. It's not as pretty as the park at 336, but it's going to be a beautiful sidewalk, and it'd be great that people can be walking safely along Kosher Drive very soon. And the other thing, and I did check with Senator Campion to make sure that it was okay that I announced this, but there is a fundraiser for Meals on Wheels this Friday from 5:00 to 7:00. To get the address, I'm not going to announce his address on TV, but if anyone wants to participate, probably it's on the Meals on Wheels website, or call Meals on Wheels and you can get the particulars about participating in that fundraiser.
Okay.
That's it.
Great. One of these days, we're going to do as part of our town survey, a survey as to whether or not you call it Kosher Drive or Coker Drive.
Oh.
That's what, that's how we pronounce it, isn't it?
I say Kosher.
Don't you say Coker?
Kosher.
It's Coker Drive.
Coker?
Says you.
Okay. So, we're going to have that on the survey one of these days, right?
Kosher with an S.
All right. We have need for a executive session tonight. We unfortunately have a fairly long list of things we have to do, contracts, personnel, and real estate, so I would like a motion, please, to go into executive session for those purposes.
I'll move.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.